Uh, welcome everyone. Today is, uh, I'm Board President Tyler Blue. Uh, today's February twenty seventh, twenty twenty four, and, uh, ready to start the study session here. Today, like to get first, uh, roll call. Again, my, I'm Board President Tyler Blue.
Superintendent Paul Swett.
Tom Hanson, Board Member.
Mary Ann Allen, Board Member.
Corey Holmes, Board Member.
Um, Vice President.
Okay, let's see, like to welcome everyone here. Uh, we are, uh, planning on today from five to six, uh, study session. Um, and I guess, if there's anything, I guess we'll just get right into it. We've got three items today we'd like to discuss. Uh, and we have some guests, presentation today by, uh, our friend J W Davies. And, um, I want you to snuggle up to the bar here and, uh, would like to. Okay, anybody else you'd like up here at the dance at the table? Um, what did you want to do?
I just have a brochure I can hand out. I don't have to come sit up there with everybody.
This is relatively low key.
I did bring a brochure about our current transition program. So we have one that we hand to businesses when we work with. We partner with businesses in the community. And then we have one for family and community members. I'll just walk around and, you know, pass it along. You're so good at that. So just them all down. There you go. Thank you.
So Lane, tell us your background yet. You are.
Okay, so I am the lead teacher at a transition college right now. And I've been there since two thousand sixteen, since my eighth year there, my eighth school year. Before that, I was at Heber Valley for five years. Um, yeah, and so, you know, just thrown with the program and I love it. Tell people that all the time, this is the best school district in the state. Tell them, come here.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Lane does a fantastic job. She's a, she's a one in a million. She's.
I love it. And our transition program is known around the state. They've asked me to speak at like the USPE conferences and I've sat on panels and stuff. We do a good, we do a good job.
She does a fantastic job.
Could you, before we, I know you just handed this, but could you just explain, Tyler, explain to us the program?
I would love to, if you have time, maybe a couple minutes.
We are on the clock, we go ahead.
All right, all right, I got that. Okay, so we are a community-based program and students come to us when they are done with high school. So at either age nineteen or nineteen, just kind of depending on it, they do four years of high school. And if they don't take their regular diploma, they're still eligible for special needs services until they're twenty-two. So then they come to our program, uh, it's totally optional, and so we kind of customize it to fit the student's needs. So I have some students that will go to work in the middle of the day and then they come to us for the rest of the day. We just kind of build that into their schedules. Um, I've had students come before for just two days a week. It's very open, kind of in what we do. Uh, we work on employment skills, some additional skills. We learn it in the classroom and then we go out and practice it in businesses. So we're in businesses every day as like a work-based learning type stuff. And myself and my paras are like the job coaches that let me go out and we practice those skills. The businesses in Heber are amazing, um, and very welcoming. We're not paid there. We kind of call it an extension of our classroom. And then we work on independent living skills and just continuing education. And what are you going to do when you grow up? When we kind of teach them, you know, you need to find social relationships and quality of life kind of stuff. And, um, we kind of try, we work with families, we work with students to customize kind of what we do for those three to four years they get with us to help them find things to do then when they're a little bit older.
And Lane, do you mind, we just add, students have to qualify with the correct adaptive and cognitive disabilities too. They would have been learning a lot of students that meet those qualities.
It's actually an IEP team.
Yeah, decision.
Uh, decision, yeah. So the IEP team will meet, yeah, and they will, uh, decide whether the student, yeah, qualifies for this program and if that's the right option for them and what they want to do.
Now, what are, what are our age categories? Are there limits? Is it?
So when they turn twenty-two, they graduate that school year. So if they turn twenty-two in October, they'll graduate in May of the following school year, that. They, they're there the whole year, right? So if they start the school year, they'll finish that school year.
So eighteen to twenty, eighteen to twenty.
Enrollment numbers, how many?
Uh, right now, so, uh, right now, we had, we started this school year with fourteen. Um, when I started in sixteen, my first year there, we had seven. Now we have fourteen. Claire gave me a spreadsheet today that we're looking at twenty by twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-five, we're looking at twenty. Um, but then it's interesting, I was sharing with Claire today, we graduate four students this year that are aging out of the program and only one of them graduated from Wasatch High School. The rest of them are from out of, yes, didn't even go to the high school here. So we get a lot of new people, which is fun because then we can connect them to the community, which is what they need, so. And it's fun to throw new faces in.
And I know these students have come with their, their families, they've come.
Yeah, we had one move in, our, one this year, she moved in her, it was her retirement, their parents' retirement. Dreamed to build a house on the property, lived here, and it was this year that they came in. Uh, one had been homeschooled. Yeah, one had been homeschooled and he came in and one was a Park City High School graduate. That's my crew this year coming, and then one's from Wasatch High. Yeah, yeah, it's an awesome program because I want to come see it, meet the students. The students are amazing. They're super fun and we still do stuff a little bit with like our alumni, J D, I keep pointing to him, his son graduated last year. But, um, we try to do stuff with kind of the adults in the community too, so that we're kind of all doing things together. Uh, we just threw a Valentine party. We had sixty people at it. It was really fun. It was, um, just alumni is welcome back and anybody kind of in the community. We try to connect everybody together for social outings.
Do you have them from like eight to two-thirty, I mean?
Uh, right now, yeah, so we're, we run the school buses. So we're based on kind of the high school, uh, schedule, just because of that, their bell schedule. So our buses drop off about seven forty-five, yeah, and then they're back out. They come grab them about two oh-five, two-ten. Most of my students are gone by two-fifteen.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, any other questions? Have you?
So I've, I've spoken a little bit to J D and I know Ken, you have as well, if anybody else, okay? Um, maybe just turn the time over to you on what your, your thinking and proposal.
Sure, thank you. I appreciate your time. I appreciate the invitation to come talk to you about this project I'm pretty passionate about because of obviously the situation that I'm in with my, my own child, um, as well as his friends and Lane and the whole group have been fantastic. You know, Wasatch High School, our experience here has been amazing with Tate growing up here from the elementary schools, the middle schools, the high school, the integration and having these special needs individuals be able to be a part of our awesome, you know, education system that we have. And, but there, you know, when they get older, I've been finding there's a social gap and there's needs that aren't being met. And so I'm just trying to be a helpful parent and, and a partner, um, with the school district to try to help solve the problem that I, that I see. Um, we've started a project called the Heber Valley Center for Learning. I'll talk to you more about that. And how I think that there could be a partnership with the school district in kind of solving these problems that I'll, that we'll go through and talk about. The Wasatch Transition College, um, is really a function of the U S Department of Education and the Utah State Board of Education. They provide funding, there's regulations for continued education for those with special needs. Education is speaking, you know, preaching to the choir here is critical for not just those of us who don't have special needs, but also for those who have disabilities. This continue, this continued education lasts about three years post-high school graduation, as Lane talked about. And in Heber, we call it the Wasatch Transition College. For many years, this transition college was located in the old high school football concessions building. It's now located in the building that's just north of the tennis courts, if you can imagine that in your mind. The college is currently led by Claire, Mayor, the district level, and Lane House at the, at the college with a wonderful job with her team of teachers. This building might look familiar to you here, um, and you can see on the side of it, it's posted, this is the Wasatch Transition College. Um, the, the signage hasn't been moved yet. This is the old building where it was located. Um, but anyway, the, the lettering is still.
We use space.
We still use the space.
We use the kitchen and the washer dryer.
Um, Wasatch School District, I, I think we all take pride in having, like, we expect to excel. We're known for excellence and we want to be the best that we can be. I think the, um, current college, you know, the transition college facilities don't really align with our values, our mission, you know, our mission statement and our motto. Um, I think Wasatch has always been a thought leader though. I think we've always wanted to have new ideas and innovation and want to be better, strive for excellence in our education. Um, I think we can do that with those with special, with our special needs as well. I think we can provide a facility where they can excel, like we, we want them to, to do. The Wasatch School District can partner with the Heber Valley Center for Learning to build a top-notch educational facility that will set the standard for the state of Utah, something that we can be proud of, much like our CAPS program was new, innovative, different, and a way that we can lead out, something that we can be proud of. So I just think we can raise our sights and think a little bit differently about the education of those with, uh, special needs. A, a thought, I don't know how much each of you have the opportunity to interact with those with special needs, but they continue to learn. They don't have a cap. Their learning is delayed, but they continue to learn. My son is twenty-two years old, but he might be like an eleven-year-old. But his capacity for learning now may be more than it's ever been. He's still learning to read. He's still learning to write. He's still learning to speak. A lot of times we're focused on, let's get Tate a job. Now he's twenty-two years old. He's, would probably be better fit to have a job if he could speak, if he could write. So his needs are continued, you know, he needs more education. The Heber Valley Center for Learning is a nonprofit Utah corporation established to provide continued education with those, uh, post-transition college. Okay? So we've raised two hundred thousand dollars from Heber Valley residents to pay for architectural plans in an education center. Um, I am a little ignorant to this environment. I probably, I was going to tell you the names of those individuals and how much, but in this public setting, I'll probably keep it more quiet. But I've shared with you some of those people and they're well-recognized, well-known people who have a love for people with special needs. And so we put that two hundred thousand dollars to work and I'll show you what we've done with that here. This is the Heber Valley Center for Learning. This is the schematical drawing that we put together. And I'll, I'll tell you more details about it. Um, before I go there, the location is Lot twenty-one of Blue Sage Ranch. It's, this five minutes from downtown was put together by the Blue Sage Ranch real estate agent, who is probably anxious to sell some lots. It's probably understated. It's probably more like seven or eight minutes, okay, to, from town. Um, but this, this site that I'm going to show you is approved by the county council for this purpose. It's close to the LDS church. It's close to where the county is going to be building a fire station and it's also close to where the Nilsens have their, uh, I don't even know, vacation home, like across the street. And so there is somewhat of, I would call it mild commercial use in the area. Um, the distance to travel from downtown to this location is similar to the distance to travel to the off-campus CAPS location. If we, if we want to think about distance and traveling for students, okay? This is Lot twenty-one. Um, it's about two point two acres, a lot of, a lot of trees on it, beautiful oak brush. And you can see the church located, um, to the right. Let me show you a little more detail of these drawings so that you can get a better sense of what, what we're going to build. This is not just a school. I like to call it a, it's a center. It's almost a place of retreat, okay? This is the site plan with twelve hundred south at the top. Um, and you can see that we've included a school here that's about thirteen, fourteen thousand square feet. We have a full gymnasium. We do have some housing in future plans, uh, for special needs that have housing, you know, needs. And plenty of parking, swim and pool, nature preserve. And this actually, this trail is the trailhead for the Blue Sage Ranch Nature Trail, um, which is a six-mile trail that goes up through the hills. So that's a little bit about the site plan. The floor plan, um, like I mentioned, consists of full-sized basketball court that could house Olympic, uh, Special Olympic Games. Um, and continue the trend and continue the awesome unified program that we have built. I don't know if you guys are aware that Abbie Cox invited our team and we went and traveled to, uh, Florida, uh, a couple of years ago. And so we built a full, a full basketball court here. We don't have time today to go through all the floor plan, but we, I'll just say, we built sensory spaces, we built a cafeteria. We built some, uh, several classrooms. We've built, um, uh, in the upstairs, we built a full library. We built a computer lab. We, we built a school, okay? We're trying to educate our special needs kids who need to continue to be educated. I'm a firm believer in education. I, we do really good about taking our special needs kids bowling. We take them and entertain them at McDonald's or, you know, whatever. But the reality is these kids need to be in the classroom longer, just like we go to college. They're no different. As a matter of fact, they just need it much longer, okay? In the basement, we put a full theater. We've put, uh, a golf simulator. You know, we, we've tried to be creative with ways that we can, we can use this space to help these kids continue to grow. This is rendering of what the design, the architecture will look like with the gymnasium on the right, the school on the left, from different elevations and different directions. So we've tried to design it to fit really well inside of a residential community, um, where it will be, it will fit in. This is a bird's eye view of the facility. So as you can see, we're, we're taking special needs education to a, uh, another level, right? We're taking it up a notch. This is a facility that we're going to be proud of. This is a facility where we can take these kids, help them continue to learn and continue to integrate them in the community. Uh, we have plans to be able to have activities and events where we can continue to invite the community to come to this location and continue to integrate with these kids. So I think that's what I wanted to show you, show you there.
So, so I understand right now, how many, how many students are in this program? So it's twenty-two and above. We have fourteen in the current, what, two twenty-two? How many do you have that would utilize this if it was open today?
So we, I'm estimating there's a couple of hundred individuals in the valley that would have a need for this type of service. So we don't have enough room for that. Uh, now, if we limit those people to their adaptive needs and their ability to continue to learn, then we're probably closer in the range of that. But how many people do we have enrolled in a post-secondary?
Yeah, that's.
Educational systems?
Zero, because it doesn't exist. Doesn't exist.
Yeah. I'm not asking you, the, the kids aged twenty-two and above are not your problem, okay? Um, but where your, I think where your purview is and your responsibility as a school board is, is with the eighteen to twenty-one-year-olds. And so what I'm saying is, I think we can build a facility that meets the needs of the transition college at the same time as meeting the needs and the goals of the Heber Valley Center for Learning ages twenty-two plus.
Would they be separated while they're there?
They would be because they'll have different teachers, right? Different, different goals, different focuses, but they'll be in the same school.
And probably do activities together, potentially.
Absolutely. I, I think, I think, uh, Lane was really, uh, she's so good to continue to reach out to Tate and these other kids to try to involve them at certain times, and I think there would be benefit, you know, to that.
So what are we doing now to teach the extended learning that you were talking about?
Twenty-two plus or the eighteen?
No, eighteen to.
Well, that's Lane, the transition college.
So, so how is that program going? How is that? And how much time do they spend in the classrooms?
We're in the classroom about three hours a day, maybe, out of our school day. So we start there, all as a whole group, and we have a couple of classes in the classroom and we eat lunch in the classroom. Some students use the classroom more than others on specific days because they all go out to job sites on different days. And they all go to two or three job sites through the week. Uh, so it's kind of a.
Rotation.
Yeah, it's kind of a rotation on who else is in the classroom. We try to do a lot in the community just because it's our communities.
What, a question for you, Lane. Do you think that's a function of the space that you currently have? Or do you think it's a function of what the needs of the individuals are?
Uh, how often we're in the classroom?
Yeah.
It's just best practice, I think. We need to be in the classroom. Uh, well, they say, you know, once they get to this post-high programs, post-high programs and transition programs and best practice is to be utilizing community resources.
Yeah.
Right? And so it's kind of, we use what we have. We go to the rec center every day, um, like pool. We go to job sites every day, businesses, things like that. So we're giving community members to know us a little bit.
Yeah.
And you can do that.
So you're, you're saying the current three hours on average that they're in the classroom, you would call that best practice?
Yeah, to be in the community, yeah, at far day, yeah.
Any other questions on that?
What's, what's your timeline?
So, really quick, um, these are estimated costs, which you guys can see. Um, I mean, as far as timeline to answer your question, Tyler, uh, right now, we're, we're before the county council. This doesn't talk timeline. Um, but the county council is, is, uh, giving their approval. We have to go through a conditional use permit application with the county. So that's sitting with Doug Smith and Austin Corey, you know, the county planners. Soon as the county approves the conditional use permit, it's a public process. You guys are probably familiar. Once that gets approved, then we plan, we plan to start raising money to build it. We think it's going to cost about eleven million dollars to build it. We're asking the school district to partner with it, with us in that and to take ownership and undivided interest in the property. It's an asset of the school district. Um, for a four million dollar commitment, we'll go raise the rest of it. Um, and then we're asking the school district to pay for forty percent of the continued, you know, taxes, maintenance, repairs of the, of the facility. That's basically that. We've spoken with a lot of people who have a lot of money and they love the idea. They want to, they want to, uh, see this happen. When we approached them, they said, you're a little early, premature in asking for this money. We need to see actual plans. We want to see bids from contractors and so that's why we're taking this thing all the way to the end to get to that point. If the school district chose to be a part of this project, then, then, um, obviously that would help us on the Heber Valley Center for Learning site as well, for obvious reasons.
Would you, would you do it without us?
Yes. Yeah, but we probably would change maybe the size and the scale of what we put together.
And then, and then in that scenario, how are you, how are things financed? How are, is that all private? Ways from these families? What, how does that?
Once these kids are, turn eighteen years old, they have funding that comes to them from the government. It's, it's a process. It doesn't come automatically, but they're, I don't know if you've heard of DSPD, but it's the Division for Specialty Services. There you go. And they, they get a budget to be able to use for things like this. So on the Heber Valley Center for Learning, we would, we would charge kids to go to school. There would be a tuition that they would need to pay, which they have some funding to do. We've also partnered with, uh, other nonprofits that, I don't know if you guys are familiar with Give dot care. It's a local software, you know, startup company who has a, a foundation to help meet the needs of those special needs post, you know, that, that haven't received DSPD funding yet. And so they could help give s- some scholarships to go to school for some of these kids who don't have the funding to do it. So there's money out there to help pay for the other side of it.
So how do you see the operation of the transition college along with the learning center on a day-to-day? So the learning center is brand new in that you're forming it, you're developing it. You're building the different procedures that go along with it. It's the ground-up part of what's already currently happening from eighteen to twenty-two. How those two operate hand in hand, I'm just curious if you've thought through that. Because in my mind, I'm trying to see, conceptually, they work well. Financially, do they have? Do they contradict? Do they share?
So in my, so in my mind, we share a facility. We share a building. But the school district continues to have Lane and her group and doing everything they're doing now, just in a different location. We, at the Heber Valley Center for Learning, will hire our own teachers. We'll hire, we'll have our own curriculum. We'll have our own programs that we'll be running in the facility, coordinating, scheduling, you know, with Lane and her, and her people, so. I don't, I don't think we share a lot of common costs other than taxes, you know, taking care of the building.
Maintenance, operation.
So I'm so confused with the four million. Explain how much it costs.
So, the, the reason I, I came up with four million is it's about forty percent of the, the estimated costs. I don't think I mentioned that the land, we are, that we have this land, it's free and clear. It was donated from the developer. We don't have to pay for the land. Um, but the, um, it, in my mind, I'm thinking, if you've got twenty kids, that's about forty percent of the capacity of the school undergoing. So that's roughly how I came up with that.
Four million for the.
Four million for the construction costs, can you, just like, what we're paying to build?
But, but I thought you said, I'm not, I thought you said you thought there might be upwards of two hundred kids that would be there.
No, two hundred kids in the valley with special needs. I, we're not gonna fit two hundred kids in this.
One day.
You're only gonna fit...
So we're only probab-, we're only gonna fit around fifty to sixty kids in that.
Okay.
So the two hundreds is kind of the populous neighborhood, right?
Right.
In that age category. So when you're looking at operating this facility, is it fair to say, in your mind, you're thinking the forty percent of the building would be dedicated to the transition college?
Yeah. That's right.
So, does the school district own that building of the transition college, or is that owned by?
So it's a shared, in my mind, we can, we can structure this so that the school district has an undivided interest in that problem, a forty percent undivided interest. It's an asset that you put on your balance.
Are there any similar situations in our state?
Not that I know of. I think this is new, thank you.
Legally, how does this work, exchanging private and public? Jared?
Counsel?
I think they're complicated.
Okay.
If you, if you wanna give a short answer, Jared, that's, that's great. I think, I think that the purpose of the study session is to introduce this to the board, and obviously we've, we've talked about this some in the past, and, uh, Jason Watt and I and Claire have been exploring this with, with, uh, Mr. Davies for, for some time, and, and, uh, so I, I would think with kind of our timeframe, we wanna leave a little bit of time for our, for our staff members, but, uh, we can, we can have this discussion in depth, um, with the board at a, at a later time, and include, include our counsel to answer some of those questions. Um, so that, that might be my recommendation. Let's take another five minutes or ten, and then...
It's, it's possible.
Conception.
Conception is possible, okay. And then, conceptually, in my mind, the way that we go down this road thinking is, we operate at forty percent capacity of the building. We ensure that we utilize forty percent of it, and once we hit that capacity, then, you know, that building is at its full. So that's your, that's your barometer to know, are we utilizing it?
Are we getting our money's worth?
Are we getting our money's worth? If we're under forty percent, then it's working. When we hit forty percent, it, just like any other school or any other facilities, that's how I conceptualize it. Am I going down the right road there?
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Anything else? Yeah, we need to move on with Todd, our presentation. Any other questions?
I appreciate you. How much, give us this much information.
I think there's something you were talking about, Jared.
Yeah.
And Jason?
Yeah.
May, maybe just a closing remark, um, would be, I, I think this is an opportunity for the school district to do something unique, do something different, and be able to partner with, I, I'm not trying to be just a complaining parent, like we have a problem. I'm trying to be a pro, you know, bring a solution. And I think for four million dollars, the facility, the, the school district could end up having, having would be a huge val-, uh, way more worth than a, than a four million dollar asset. And so I think, I think it deserves a hard look, and, and I think that, uh, there, I'm, I don't have all the answers, but I think, I think it, I believe it can work, and we can work through whatever questions you may have.
We appreciate you bringing it. We appreciate your support of all the, of all the special needs kids, and you've, you've set a good example for, for our community and for, for us, and we appreciate your, your partnership.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Never apologize for being their voice, man.
Yeah, well, you know, they, I, I could get a little more passionate than, than I have been right now about it. I think they've been, you know, we can do better. We can do better.
Hey, quick question. Let's just say we went down this road, and let's just say it didn't work.
Yeah.
Could this building be sold off? Could it be a private school? I mean, are you building something to be a private school?
No, the county, the county is making an exception for the land use to be as a special needs educational center. That's what the purpose of that.
Okay.
That, they allowed us to take, it's, it should be a five or six acre lot, but the county, when we developed it, they've dedicated it specifically for this purpose. And I'll be honest with you, the reason we developed Blue Sage Ranch is because I knew this was gonna be a special, it was gonna be a special place.
Okay.
So there's a purpose to it.
Hey, thank you, man. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I was gonna say, thank you for providing us, and now we gotta share all the information.
I was gonna, I was gonna ask Laine what she thought, what she thought, but I think, from talking to her, she's very much in support of what we're trying to do. Is that fair?
Yeah, we need space, and we, right? We need somewhere to keep doing the awesome things we're doing, so.
Cool.
As a girl?
Yeah. Well, and thank you for what you do.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Can I transition, I hate our meeting. If, uh, Todd, would you?
So, I'm really excited to talk to you about this. This is something that, um, we've been working on for a long time, and really, the history of this idea goes back, um, in our district a number of years. And, um, I'll be talking to you about when, um, the data shows that we were most successful in this endeavor in Wasatch School District, and our aspiration is to, um, get back to that and exceed it by, uh, a lot of students. And so the, the purpose of this presentation, and this, this, this is really gaining a lot of traction across the state. People are really interested in this. But currently, we are in the middle of a pilot exemption that, um, has been signed between Utah's, um, System of Higher Education and the Utah State, uh, Board of Education and our, and our district representation to, um, substitute concurrent enrollment Math Ten Ten for secondary Math Three. And so, um, my intent today is to talk to you about that, so that, um, you understand what we're trying to do and why we feel like it's so important. If you'll advance that one, Stacy.
Could you, Todd, before you on, could you explain to us what it is now? What, what is the current situation, and then what is this transition that it involves?
Yeah, I would love to. And so, um, the, 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 the way, um, students are in credit in math for graduation in the state of Utah for over ten years now, is they take courses called Secondary Math One in ninth grade, Secondary Math Two in tenth grade, Secondary Math Three in eleventh grade. Then after completing those three courses with grades of C or better, then, um, they become eligible to, um, move on to Math Ten Ten, which is...
Which is a concurrent enrollment.
It's a prerequisite course that the college is used to prepare our students to take first year college math.
Tom took it like three times in college.
So, um...
I'm a proud Gary Turner.
So you can skip Math Ten Ten currently, if you can score a twenty-three or higher on the Math ACT. And, um, our proposal is that instead of having to go through Secondary Math One, Two, and Three and score a twenty-three or higher on the ACT, that we would replace Secondary Math Three with concurrent enrollment Ten Ten, and then that would qualify students if they could get a C or higher grade to immediately transition into their first year college course.
Their senior year.
Uh-huh, their senior year. Yeah. And so, um, the justification for the pilot, um, the reason why we felt like Utah's system was failing, and it, these are metrics that we took within our own district, but I'm confident that across the state it's worse. But we found that three-fourths of our students that were completing Secondary Math Three were not scoring a twenty-three or higher on the ACT. And also interesting, students who took Secondary Math Three honors, which is a calculus preparatory course, a fourth of those students were not scoring a twenty-three or higher. So whatever the standards were, whatever the pedagogy was, it wasn't working to the objective outlined by UCI to qualify for the college math course. So we just felt like there should be something better. And so, we look back into our own history to find the answer. And, um, our best year longitudinally across our district was in twelve thirteen. And in thirteen, forty-five percent of our students graduated with Math Ten Fifty complete. That's almost half the students that walked across the stage had their first year college math then. And, um, supporting that...
Can I just interject for a moment what that really means? So, what, what that means if they have Ten Fifty complete, that means that they have, on their transcript, a math class. So, what happens if you don't have a college, a state, a state college, state system college, call it UCI? If you don't have a UCI course on your transcript, and you go on a mission, and you get back and you go enroll at UVU or Utah State, they make you take a test. And most kids don't do as well on that test as, as, as it relates to whatever course they took in college. So what do they do? I'm sure Tom was joking. Let's just stick with that as being a joke, but that's the true, that's what happens. People take ninety-nine, a hundred, a hundred and ten, and they're, none of them even count as math on your college transcript. But if you have Ten Fifty on your college transcript, and you get back from your mission, or you go do, you go on your long walk through the Amazon, or whatever it is that you do, and then you come back, and then you come back to the college system, you get to start wherever you're at on your transcript. And so this is a huge deal to our, our kids, and this is, uh, when, when Tom talks about, you know, twelve, thirteen, forty-five percent of our graduates were locked in to the state system with a math class, and, and UVU was standing up in state meetings and saying, "The, the rest of the state needs to go see what's going on at Wasatch High, 'cause their kids are all coming prepared and ready." And when the state changed that curriculum on us, they promised lots of things, and none of them came true. So this is one time where it's appropriate for us to get back to the good old days and help our kids. And Todd and, and, uh, others, the teaching and learning team have done a lot of work. They've, they've camped on the Chair of the State Board's front porch to get a reception, and, uh, this is up and running. And when he says others are really, um, interested in this, he's talking about they're interested in what we're doing right now at Wasatch, is bringing this back to where, I mean, back in the day, when these things were happening, the, the most advanced students in their sophomore year were taking Ten Fifty, and then going on to maybe two AP classes before they graduate. And, uh, so this, this is a big deal for our, our kids. Um, you may hear a little bit out there in the community, some of your own kids may be taking Ten Ten and, and finding out that it's, that it's a little more college. It's not, it's not as much of, of, uh, it's, it's tough, and, and you have to be ready. You have to be ready to take the test the first time, and there're just things out there that, that maybe there's a few little growing pains, but it's gonna be, it's gonna be worth it, and we, we're, we'd love to get back to forty-five percent of our kids. So this, this is really a big deal for our students and helping them. I, I don't mean to take so much, I don't...
Actually, I really appreciate that. So well said. And, um, yeah, Superintendent and Abai, through our careers, have been really trying to get back to this for a long time, and finally, this window of opportunity is here for us.
And you, I mean, sorry, don't mean to interrupt, but when he said jumping through hoops, I, I wish you could talk about that for just a little bit.
Well, okay, so I, I, I would love to. And, and so, um, the signatures that we have on this pilot, we have two signatures from the Utah System of Higher Education. We have two signatures from the Utah State Board of Education. These are not board members. They are specialists in the state office, representing mathematics. Um, we have two signatures from our district, and we also have two signatures from UVU. And so in order to present this, one of the requirements was that we would go through, go, go through the standards and objectives of the course with the UVU professors, so that they could see how the sequence would go from Secondary Math Two through Ten Ten.
If we can get this rolling, then, then our, our objective would be to replace Math Two, and keep, keep lowering this down in the system back to where it used to be.
Okay, so on the next slide, um, you can see what, uh, the, what, what the alternative sequence looks like. And so, the pilot has been written for Math Ten Fifty, but Ten Forty and Ten Thirty also qualify. So what students would do, um, currently, as written, in ninth grade, they take Secondary Math One. In tenth grade, they take Secondary Math Two. But this is where the exemption now starts. In eleventh grade, um, our math teachers are actually weaving in the prerequisite standards into the Math Ten Ten standards. So it's not a cut-and-dry first semester pre-Ten Ten, second semester Ten Ten. Our agreement with UVU evolved to, over the course of a year, that Math Ten Ten standards would be supported with any types of prerequisites that the teachers felt like students needed to learn in order to successfully master the Ten Ten standards. So that's, the, the, the Ten Ten course and prerequisite is being taught over a year's time. And as students earn grades of C or better in that class, that now makes them eligible their senior year to take that first year quantitative literacy, PUL math class. And so tho- those three courses that are on the screen right now constitute math credit for degree-seeking students. So Ten Thirty, quantitative literacy, Ten Forty, statistics, or really, our target class is Ten Fifty. And the reason why that's our target class is because it's universal to any major on campus. Ten Thirty, some majors, Ten Forty, other majors, Ten Fifty, any major. Whether you're a STEM student or not, Ten Fifty is going to take you sequentially to the next course.
So what, what would it be? An algebra, what, what are the...
It's college algebra.
College algebra, basically.
Yeah.
College algebra, first year college math.
It's the prerequisite. It's the course that pretty much for your undergrad, in the general education, if you're not a STEM student, you have to take that course, and it is the course that keeps more kids from graduating than any other course.
I said Tom took it three times.
I get it.
I took it three times.
I actually probably...
I was, I'm not joking.
Tended for sure.
Gary Turner got me through college math before, didn't take one college class, one college math class at the University of Utah. I had all done high school, thanks to Gary.
I was telling Todd, that is what prevented me from moving on.
Yeah, and I, and I majored in economics. So I had, I didn't take one, it was all done in high school. So let's get back to that.
Yeah, for sure. So the next slide, um, presents our, our, our current, well, listen to this sentence, our current concurrent enrollment, enrollment.
Three times.
Are you sure you need that?
I'm not sure. So last year, we had a hundred and twenty-one students take Math Ten Ten. This year, we have four hundred and seven students taking that course. And so, th- this is the current challenge. And like Superintendent said, I don't know if some calls are going to, um, come, come to each of you, um, asking about, um, this new math, this math pathway that we're trying to, trying to support. But we've gone through, through why, why we need to support it. But now, we've gone through the philosophy, that now the action is, first of all, of these four hundred and seven students, we need to make sure they get Cs or better in this course. And so that's a lot of pressure on our teachers that are teaching this for the first time in this sequence. And so, the district is really trying to rally behind them with the school, making sure that they're getting the support they need in order to teach the course well. And then the second thing that we need is, of those students, we need them all to sign up for their first year college math class, 'cause that's why they took Ten Ten their junior year. They need to sign up for Ten Fifty, or Ten Forty or Ten Thirty their senior year, so that they can receive the benefit. And that's the message that needs to go out to this community, that there's this phenomenal opportunity. And it's a little bit hard, because we're asking you to do some college work before you go to college, that this is your... you go to college, that this is your benefit, this is your opportunity. And wow, if we could get all four hundred and seven of those students into 10-50 next year, I, I would really be moved by the opportunity that that would provide those students.
So, do we have a plan for that, or...
Well, we're messaging it. If you would go back just once, Stacy, I wanted to make the point, forward one, please, that we, we, that, that this Math 10-10 pilot is really not diminishing our advanced pathway. And so, 10-10 is great, but, I mean, this was probably Tom's pathway in high school.
You know, I decided not to do the AP Calculus, but took the concurrent enrollment at UVU. It's easier. And I was below the twenty-three on the ACT.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm below the twenty-three on the ACT in math, and did three math classes in high school. And went straight into advanced economics, quantitative classes, because Gary Turner taught me how to do math.
But this slide just represents, in addition to the four hundred and seven students that are substituting Secondary Math 3 for Math 10-10, we also have an advanced pathway. And we have seventy-eight juniors on a pre-calculus track, and forty-one juniors that are currently taking AP Calculus. So, you know, put another hundred and plus students onto that four oh seven, we have over five hundred students.
The way you do it is, you just get it going. Because I think about, I think about the, the counselors that told me about it, I knew, I have brothers that came out, they had done it. Once you get away from it, it's brand new. Once you get back to it, then it becomes year after year, and it builds. So, your first couple of years are gonna be the hardest, because it's new. But you get a few classes through it, then those, those kids...
That makes sense.
Those kids and those parents don't have to pay for the college, and they come back in their missions and don't have to take remedial math, and they graduate from college in three years, because they didn't, their math in high school.
I agree. Once, once that gets rolling, everybody's gonna, you know, the parents are gonna say, how do I get my kid into that program?
Yeah. Yeah, or I had one brother do it, and the other, let's...
Right.
Let's make this work.
This is great.
It is great. It's, I'm surprised the state screwed up one backwards.
Let's, uh...
But this is forward thinking.
Eric, a little bit of time. Let's have that four hun-, one hundred to four hundred, let's have a little...
Let's hear it. Now, how can we get all math teachers to be Gary Turner?
Yeah.
That's tough. We'll ask the animal science department to help us with that cloning thing.
Let's go find, he's back, he's around town.
If we can just get some T cells from him.
Okay.
Thank you, Todd. Riveting policy discussions.
It is, it is. After that last one, but if we're talking about T cells, maybe we should talk about medical administration policy, but, so, what we're hoping to do, and again, just according to our pattern, before we do anything with the policy in our regular meeting, we're gonna bring it to you guys, in case you have any questions. So, one of the things we're trying to do is, is clean up the policy. Now, also, it's easier for parents to have access to, and the district to have access to. One of the things that we found is, we actually had three policies that talk about medication administration. So, what we're doing tonight is, we're asking to retire our opioid overdose, which is now part of our medication administration policy. We're, we asked to retire that one, and we actually have a, two medication administration policies on there, and we're asking to retire the older one, and just stick with the newer one. So, I don't know if you guys have the policy.
We had our policy meeting, and we chatted this. It was, yeah.
Okay.
Awesome. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Unless you guys have questions.
Corey, policy questions?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. How about that, four, seven minutes to spare even. How about that? Yeah, anything else? Open this up to discussion. Anybody got a phone to pick? The girls are winning by eleven.
Girls are?
I've been wondering about that.
Five minutes ago.
Is that semifinal?
Yeah, that's awesome.
Finals. When are we having the...
No, I'd be right here.
The cheer squad and the girl wrestling games coming in. Those are our latest state champs, aren't they?
Yeah, we usually, we'll usually do like all the winter sports at the same time. So, we'll let this basketball team see how far they get.
They're gonna do it.
We'll plan on next month for winter sports. What are they saying? The next, the next round is the buzzsaw, the bountiful rolls are good, I guess.
I'll just check your game.
Don't have a coach that's been there forever with the bountiful... Okay, if anything, we'll now adjourn to our...